Good evening. I'd like to call the regular board meeting of the Waterloo Community Schools Board of Directors to order and ask that you join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, and will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and now Astor Williams will read our mission statement this evening.
The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate, prepare for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by the continued education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thanks, Astor. Then the next item on our agenda this evening is a board celebration for why Waterloo schools. It's item A on page one, and this is something that we've been doing at our last few board meetings, or opportunity for our staff to share reasons why they've chosen the Waterloo schools. And I am kind of saying, I can't see back here, so at this point, I would like to ask Simona, I want to ask her how to say her last name so I say it right. Brianna?
Yes, correct.
Perfect, alright.
Thank you.
To come forward, thank you, and I didn't mean, my name gets mispronounced a lot, so I want to make sure that I say it correctly, so.
Do I need this?
You do. Is the light on?
Ah, yes, there is, yes.
And maybe they'll have to turn it up in the back, because it's a little light.
Can you hear me? Yes?
Not yet.
Not yet?
If you're talking, maybe they can...
We'll get it.
Can you guys turn it up in the back?
Can you hear me now?
No, but I like your eyes in.
Yes? Try again? And...
Well, and the green light is on?
Yes, the green light is on. Okay.
I think so too, just go ahead.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for this opportunity to share my why in Waterloo. My name is Simona Boroyano, and I am the Second Language Learner Instructional Coach for the Waterloo Community School District, supporting the thousand-plus identified ELL students, Second Language Learner students, their families, teachers, and administrators. I came to the area about twenty years ago. I was carrying six suitcases and holding a few academic degrees, of which one was in English, and that's an important detail for what I'm going to share next. I was here officially on a mission to pursue my doctorate in education, and unofficially to satisfy my enormous curiosity about the greatest country in the world. I landed in Chicago, and upon arrival, I had my first quick and hard immersion lesson, which left me firmly convinced that my English would need some immediate and serious TLC. And that is how my American journey started. Growing up with a father who was a big fan of John Wayne, it was no surprise to me that my first trip out of Iowa was to the old Tucson Studios in Arizona, and my first purchase was a pair of black cherry cowboy boots and a fine Stetson cowboy hat next door in Texas. That was the fun part. But my mother, a history and philosophy instructor, always brought me down to earth by reminding me in each phone conversation to do my job well, no matter how hard the circumstances may be. "You are not what you eat," she would say to me, "you are what you read." With her words echoing in my mind while in school and on the job, I have taken advantage of as many of the abundant learning opportunities as I could, from trainings and conferences to books and great advisors, technology, systems of support, hands-on experiences, trips, I absorbed all of them. "Only in America," I would say to myself, filled with gratitude and always amazed that so much was at my fingertips. Only in America. So I completed my degree, and I may have learned firsthand a thing or two about this country too. But most importantly, I started a career with the Waterloo schools. I made myriads of memories. I developed a massive network of friends and friendly acquaintances, and toll-free numbers became part of my lifestyle. Most people would sum up all of these aspects in one word: home. And so did I. I had built a home, and I had become an American. In the process, I had gone through all of the documented stages of acculturation and the associated feelings. I had been euphoric, ecstatic, amused, irritated, anxious, calm, accepting, and in the end, at peace. There are many stories I could pick from in order to illustrate how I moved from culture shock to integration. Instead, I would like you to better understand how the bits and pieces that I shared with you are connected and turned into this motivating force that fueled my passion and desire to continue to work here in Waterloo, the place that gave me an invaluable gift, a gift that I'm paying forward and that I will not name until after you complete this brief exercise. And Dr. Lindemann is going to pass out some very easy questions that I would like you to fill out in, oh, maybe thirty seconds. Okay. I assume everyone has completed the little worksheet, and what I'd like you to do, I'd like you to look through what you wrote, and I would like you to pick one aspect that you can live without. You must pick one. This is not a choice. Pick one and cross it off. And also rank it number one. So your first choice, yep. Now pick a second one and rank it number two. This is not a choice, you must. Do the same with the rest of them and rank them number three, four, and five until you're left with none, until everything is crossed off on your worksheet. Hard, right? Not an easy choice, but you are now left with none. So we do not have a whole lot of time to do in-depth debriefing, but I'm asking you that you take a moment to reflect on how difficult it was to remove one by one each layer of your identity. Just reflect on that briefly in your head, maybe talk to your elbow partner if you have something to share. Who were you in the end of this exercise? How did this make you feel? Think of what makes you you. Put yourself in the student's shoes, Second Language Learner, and think what would feel like to have to leave at the door all of you you are. Your name may be mispronounced. Your language appears to be useless in the new environment. Your nationality or skin color perhaps stigmatized. Your religion vilified. I could go on and on and dissect all of the aspects of the cultural dissonance that these students experience. However, I would like to end the exercise on the note that is the measure of my profession, and that is the power to validate these Second Language Learners as individuals with the same potential to success as anyone else, to instill a sense of belonging and the confidence that being culturally and linguistically different makes them global citizens and not marginal ones, to pave these students' way to building a new identity without losing or resenting their old one, so they can confidently say, "I am not a stereotype, I am what I read." Last but not least, I would like to mention a progressive initiative that I am part of and that involves a dual-language immersion signature program in Waterloo. This program allows students to function academically in their native language for fifty percent of the day and in English for the other fifty percent of the day. Such dual-language immersion formulas are known in research as having the highest correlation with academic success. We are very excited and motivated to press forward so that the French immersion program that we now have in place will expand next fall and branch out into an additional Spanish immersion section. Thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you so much for sharing your story and for your enlightenment and your thought. I think I'll be thinking about this long into, long into our meeting and past this evening, so thank you for that. The next item on our agenda this evening is information from individuals and delegations, and so this is the opportunity where those who wish to address the school board may do so. I ask that you please keep your comments to three minutes or less, and Mrs. Arndorfer will hold up a yellow card when you have thirty seconds remaining and a red card when your time has expired. At that time, I will ask you to conclude your public remarks. Please also keep your comments respectful and constructive, because we are all here with the goal of trying to help our students. I'd also ask that you avoid criticizing the job performance of specific employees of the school district. Personnel matters are confidential and must be handled through proper channels, not in this public forum. And finally, we do provide this as an opportunity for public comment, but it's generally not a back-and-forth discussion, especially for items that are not on our agenda, but we will certainly try to help with information either after our meeting or, you know, the next day follow-up. But we do need to continue on with our agenda this evening. So with that, I would invite anyone who wishes to address the board to come forward, and please state your name and address, and make sure the little green light is on.
Good evening. My name's Steve Ray. I live at fifteen-twenty Glenny Avenue, Waterloo, Iowa. I'd just like to preface what I have to say today is a question for everybody. Does the school board feel comfortable using a percentage of taxpayers' money to pay for services that are not being provided? And I say this simply because we moved home approximately two months ago. It's a little closer to the high school where my son attends, and I cannot get busing for my son to go to school. So therefore, getting responses from Durham School Services, "I'm sorry, all the buses are full, they're not providing a service that they're being paid for." All I want for my son is to be able, him to be transported to and from school. We live approximately 1.2 miles from the school, and he's been told if he cannot get somebody to drive him there because the buses are full, he has to walk. It's inconceivable that someone should have to walk 1.2 miles to school in the weather conditions that have been prevailing in Iowa at the moment. So I just want to say, why are Durham not providing a service? I don't want my son picked up there. I see several buses leaving the school of an afternoon. My wife takes him to school of a morning. There's buses that drive down our street. There's plenty of buses that drive down Eleventh, and I've never seen them full of an afternoon. So I just can't figure out why I can't get my son bused to school. And that's about the extent of my conversation for today. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
What, if I could ask a question, what level is your son? What grade level?
I gotta think. I'm not, I'm not from the US. And he's in his second year of high school.
Sophomore.
Thank you.
If I could add something, I know multiple families in Evansdale even...
You need to come to the mic, thank you. And will you please state your name and address? Thanks. It's just our policy.
My name is Stacy Strater. I live at fifteen-fifteen West Gilbert Drive in Evansdale, and I suffered from the same problem when I was in middle school. We lived 1.2 miles from the school, and I had to walk through the heat and through the snow with no sidewalks. And now my sister has to go through the same thing, and it's very frustrating. We've had cars come up to us and try to offer us drugs. It's very dangerous. We need buses. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy.
What's your last name?
Strater?
Strater.
Strater? Thank you.
Just out of curiosity, Jane, because I lived in the Glendale area and I walked to West High every day for three years. So I, I have done that, but I just wondered if we could talk about what the district provides as far as guidelines for busing, which might explain that to you also, and how that correlates to, you know, state standards that were actually maybe a little more lenient in some districts.
Sure, yeah. Actually, the state, the state law says that school districts must provide transportation for elementary and middle school students who live more than two miles away, and for high school students, it's students who live more than three miles away. We actually exceed those parameters. We're busing more kids than that, and we changed, we stay the same. We take the state regulations for, for the middle school and high school age, but at elementary, we drop it down to one mile. So the state says you must transport anybody who's two miles or more away, that live away from the school, but we actually transport kids who live just one mile or more away. So we trust, we, we transport more. And I've talked with, with Mr. Ray multiple times, sharing with him that the, the state does provide those guidance, and they provide funding for the school district, districts to use. However, they don't, they don't require that we bus every single person, and so the, the funding that comes in with that is commensurate with what they expect us to do. So we, they do expect that students would have either, you know, certainly walking is an option, or that parents would have the responsibility to help make transportation arrangements. I have talked with Mr. Ray about potential options and, and have shared those with him multiple times. So that is the, the state policy. We actually exceed the state policy, but I certainly don't, I certainly acknowledge that it can be frustrating for parents to have to, have to assist with the transportation of their children.
I have a question. I guess none of the, none of the mics are really working tonight, but I know that we have rules for a reason, but I also believe that one size does not necessarily fit all. I would be interested in knowing if there's a transportation committee, and if so, if we can look at how many families are requesting or have requested a change in policy, and let's just look at what the implications are. And thank you very much, both of you, for, for coming forward. So I don't know what the requests are.
Right, and that, and that certainly could be something that the board, the board has goals for me as the superintendent, so if that is a priority, that would be something that we would want to look for in rearranging board goals for me, yeah.
Rhonda, we often deal with transportation issues in the facilities committee, but we do not have a set transportation committee, but certainly the bus contracts and some, and that is something that I, we can take forward to our next meeting, just a discussion about it.
Yeah.
We, we transport approximately fifty percent of our students, and it costs us about four million dollars a year to do that. So that's just kind of the macro. Obviously, we could transport everybody, but it would be, something else in the budget would have to trade off for that, but, I mean, we can always look at adjusting the guidelines, but they've been there for many years, one mile. Is this, this, yeah. Yeah, I think it is an interesting question as to how many have asked for assistance, and we have said the buses are full. And the other question, of course, is the definition of full, and so, you know, we might want to look into whether they're full all the time or what, what the actual ridership is, because sometimes they're full on paper, but some students almost never ride, so that's why you see buses that aren't, aren't full, but that, but the seat is there for them because they qualify for busing. So that's...
Then what, what would be the law on that if, because by law, we have to provide seats, both with the guidelines, but even though they don't ride, then one day they say, "I'd better ride," and there's no seat. Legally, what, how would the law?
I guess I'm, I'm concerned more with the hazardous conditions, as was mentioned by our, our guests tonight. I, I would not necessarily recommend a change in policy unless it can be proven that there's some type of hazardous conditions, whether it's inclement weather, no sidewalks, or something like that. I'm not familiar with the terrain or the geographic location, but I'd just like to find out. For those families and parents who are requesting busing, maybe we can just look at what the conditions are, because I think the board's goal is the safety of our children.
Yeah, and I would just, I'm just gonna step in here. I think the reason we, we say this is not a back-and-forth is because we're making, we're, we're making some statements that we want to be very cautious about. So I think that if we're looking at a transportation decision, I think we need to look at a system, and we need to, we need to look at the, the, you know, all, all of the information around it. I think we just need to be, we need to be cautious about that before we're making decisions.
And this evening is, the board table right here right now is not the decision to make on one individual this evening, so, okay. Alright, anything further from our audience? Alright, then seeing none, I will move forward with our consent agenda, and this evening that consists of three items. Item B, which are the minutes of the January eighth, two thousand eighteen regular board meeting. Item C, which are personnel appointments and adjustments, and item D, which are bills due and, I'm sorry, bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings, which is item D. I would entertain a motion to put those items on the table. Thanks, Sue. And a second? Thanks, Rhonda. Are there any items that board members wish to have removed from the consent agenda? Alright, then seeing none, all those in favor of approval of the three items on the consent agenda this evening, please signify by saying aye. And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. The next item on our agenda is the East High School JROTC field trip to Sedalia, Missouri. It's item E, and it's on page sixteen. And I'm gonna get that motion on the table, which is that the Board of Education approve travel for the East High JROTC students and instructors to attend the annual Tiger Invitational Drill Meet in Sedalia, Missouri on February sixteenth and seventeenth, two thousand eighteen. Thanks, Sue. And a second? Excellent, and I see that we have some wonderful students with us here tonight, one of whom's already been to the microphone. Excellent, so I'm gonna turn it over to you this evening.
Okay, uh, thank you, ma'am.
There we go.
Thank you, board. Lieutenant Colonel Keith, and we were able to have some of our leaders, our team commanders from the drill team, and I wanted to share a video with you, because I was here in December, and we competed in Waynesville, Missouri, and just, I'll direct your attention to that. Hopefully, we'll see how the sound goes here, because we have had some issues with the sound. Oh, there we go, it's, we're operational. Alright, here we go. Some high adventure there from our cadets. They did an outstanding job. I'd like to highlight, there was twenty-two different teams, and in this competition, I mean, we had teams that competed at national level. There was a, like, number ten team in the nation was there, competed, and our team from East High for the color guard and for the unarmed exhibition, we were right in the middle of the pack. So I'm very happy with the way they competed, and we got a lot of the same crew that's gonna go to this, to this next, at Smith Cotton High School. And, you know, our makeup, I do have our makeup for, for our team this year, or for this next meet. About two-thirds are freshmen and sophomores, and the other, the remaining third are seniors and juniors. Two-thirds, sixty-four percent of our team is female, so we do have a strong female contingent, and we're almost at forty percent of having a diversity within our, with our team. So today, we've got our sergeant major, and he will, he'll come up and tell, tell you what his, what he's in charge of as a team commander.
Alright, my name's Austin Snyder, and I'm in charge of the unarmed exhibition drill, and that is with no rifles, and it is strictly marching forty-three commands, and it is pretty, pretty hard at some points, depending on what skill level you're dealing with and how experienced the other cadets are.
And I think those drill sergeants make it a little bit difficult too, right?
And is that a sudden death thing where when you, not really death, but where, when you, as soon as you, as soon as there's a mistake, you're out? Is that kind of how it goes, sort of like a advanced Simon Says type of thing? Am I right on that?
Uh, no, it's all based off a point system.
Okay.
And it's the, there'll be a team of drill instructors, and they will have all eyes on you, picking out every little detail and docking points off you, or giving you points and giving you words of encouragement to help you to become better for your next drill meet.
Gotcha. So you do, you complete the whole series of forty-three moves?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great.
The one good thing, though, you did bring up a point, throughout the whole day, our cadets do compete in the individual drill, dressed down.
Yes.
And that is like Simon Says, you're, you know, you're out.
Okay.
And we had, was it six cadets make it to the final round? Yeah, but like, six cadets, you know, we had, I don't know how, five or six hundred cadets, and we had six make the final two hundred.
That's awesome. Great.
And then we have our Cadet Battalion Commander, Ms. Strater here. She'll, she'll explain what she's in charge of.
Hello again. My name is Stacy Strater. I am in charge of the armed regulation. It's similar to unarmed except we have weapons with us, and we'll have the floor to ourselves and be judged by drill commanders and all that, point system.
And this is the first time we've done...
Yes, this is new to us. We are learning. It's a new leadership opportunity for me and learning opportunity for all of our cadets. We're working very hard on it, and so far, it's going pretty good. Everybody seems to enjoy it.
How big is your, your group?
We have nine cadets, including, Bea makes ten as a commander, and same for the unarmed.
And you, the foreign men, as the commander?
Yes.
And then lastly, we have our logistics officer, and she's also our color guard commander, First Lieutenant Ledley.
Hi, my name is Cassidy Ledley. So I'm in charge of our armed color guard. It's a series of movements that we would do, pretty much like any movement you could do with color guard. It's in the routine, and we have a four-person color guard, so we have two guards that carry rifles, and then we have, I'm carrying the American flag, and then we have another carrying the Iowa flag. And we get judged like on a point system, so we're the only ones on the floor when it's happening, and then we have the drill sergeants around judging us.
They let you carry the Iowa flag in Missouri?
Yeah.
And just wondering with you three, I also like to ask this. How do you feel the ROTC program has helped you, and are you looking at maybe a career in some type of military or not?
I know personally, I'm thinking about it, and it has made me a better person all around. I know that it's, it's a leadership-based program, so it really does help with our leadership skills, and I think we can say the same for my friend.
So before I was in JROTC, I was a extremely shy, very young girl. If the teacher called me, my face would turn red, and I would pretend that I didn't hear them. But I joined JROTC my freshman year, thinking I would try something new, and now I'm here speaking in front of the school board as the battalion commander of JROTC.
What year are you?
I'm a senior.
Very articulately.
Yes.
Has that military bearing?
Um, I actually have planned on joining, joining into the military, going... Um, I actually have planned on joining into the military, going artillery. But like Stacy, I was a very shy kid, and I also joined my second semester of freshman year. And I ended up enjoying, enjoying ROTC and what it has done for me and how it has made me a better student and a better person in the community.
And what do the red, silver, and gold?
So this is our Battalion Commander, this is her Battalion Commander cord.
Okay.
And then she wears the white cord, that's for competing in our, in our color guard. And then she's a Staff Officer on the battalion staff, and she serves as our Logistics Officer. So she manages our supply room, we have about, anywhere about four hundred types of different uniforms and all kinds of equipment. So she's, she helps run that and issue that equipment. And the Sergeant Major here, that's the Sergeant Major cord, the silver cord.
You guys have a lot of hardware, I noticed.
Well, they worked hard, they learned it.
They sure have, it's wonderful. I hope you'll bring us back a video, too, in a couple months, we'd love to see one.
Who did that video?
It was really great.
Well, between our Public Affairs Officer, we brought a, one of our cadets is, when he designated as Public Affairs Officer. So between them and using some apple, we were able to make that up.
It's very impressive.
So how many total students do you have in the program?
Uh, right now, we have eighty-one.
Wow.
Wow.
I'm looking to get, I've been going to the middle school nights with the eighth grade. So my goal is to have a hundred enrolled this next year. And so we're hoping to, I want to, I want to make a lot of good leaders there in the high school.
Well, and, you know, it's a great opportunity for our students, I mean, US Military has the best leadership program in the world. And so you're taking advantage of it, and it's really good to see.
We got some great students that lead, that lead their peers.
And just for the seniors, are you all pre-seniors?
Just me.
Just you, because there's a lot of scholarships.
Yes.
And you look like you probably would be able to give one.
Especially if there's an oral presentation part, you're gonna rock it, so.
But I mean, you can get your whole school.
Yeah, you can.
Yep. Awesome, so.
This concludes our presentation, unless you have any more questions, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, and carry that Iowa flag proudly.
We will, thank you.
We're excited for you.
If you could come back and show us how you do it.
Yeah, for sure.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so after that impressive presentation, I would like to make sure that we do vote on this, actually, tonight. So all those in favor of sending the East High School JROTC field trip to Sedalia, Missouri, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried, best of luck to you. Yep. The next item on our agenda then is item F, this is on page twenty-nine, and this is our two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen High School Planning Guide and Course Catalog. And the recommended motion is that, I have to get to it, excuse me, um, almost there. That the Board of Education approved the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen High School Planning Guide and Course Catalog. Thank you, Sue, and a second? And a second, thank you, Lyle. And now discussion, I know we have several people here from the district tonight, and we've all had a chance, you know, this was given to us earlier. This is the draft, it's quite a large document, but I'm always excited when it comes out. Maybe just because I have high school students, and I always get to see what, what new things are available for them this year. But Comfort, are you gonna speak with us tonight? Are you the first one? Alright. I didn't know if it was Jeff or who was talking.
He's coming with me.
He's coming?
Yep.
Alright, just walk us through some of the changes, I know, I know, like I said, we've had this document, but it'd be great for us to hear it from you guys.
So Jeff and I will speak to that, and we may actually invite great teachers sitting over there to join in if needed. So basically, we, the most, I would say, important changes or additions would be what we focused on in regards to, of course, Jeff will speak to the career and technical education, and then we also had some changes related to social studies. And Jeff, do you want to go first?
You can go.
Okay. So when it comes to the social studies, we, it's on, I mean, you have the information, I think. On the second page, it lists the general pathway for students, and we indicated what it would be, starting at the ninth grade. We have US History A and B, and then tenth grade, we have US History C and Geography. So that Geography was previously not offered, but that's something that we're adding this year. And then at the eleventh grade level, we have World History, and they have a choice from the World History A, B, and B, C, and A, C, so they can choose from those. And then in twelfth grade, they take US Government and Contemporary Affairs. And we have an explanation in there from the teachers, and this, the teachers really worked hard to think about what was needed for our students, of course, to get them ready for career and college readiness, if they choose to go to college. And also really thought about the ACT standards, which are not necessarily just for students who want to go to college, but they really provide our students with some good skills and to help them to be successful, even if they chose not to go to college. So our teachers really worked hard, they collaborated over a long period of time, and then they actually turned in a proposal. We challenged them to, to think about what our students need, and think about what we currently have, and think about what it would take to get them to where we want them to be. And so they really worked hard, and they sent a proposal to us, which we looked at. Then we got back together and had some really good conversation, conversations in regards to that, before we actually approved those courses. So basically, that's, you know, in a nutshell, that's what we, we added. Then Jeff is gonna talk about the other part.
So have we identified staff for the new courses? Have we identified staff for the new courses?
I would say yes and no. We've identified staff for some of the courses, and then for others, we're in the process of, it's not as though we haven't thought about it. We have, but we still have some logistics, you know, and so that's why, we can't give you specific names, is what I'm trying to say, but we have thought about it.
And what does US World History C?
I'm going to bring in our teachers, because I think it'll be kind of nice for them to share what the vision is. We know, but they're here, so we'll have them speak.
Ryan Paulson, I'm the Social Studies Department Charity's Thai.
I'm Liz Wagner, I'm the Social Studies Department Chair at West Thai.
Basically, when the new social study standards came out, they were a lot more rigorous than what we've had to meet in the past, which we were actually very excited about. They're, if you knew the old ones, they were very generic, and, and also, we have several district initiatives, like ACT alignment, literacy equity, things like that. And then we also had a need that we've discussed, ever since I've been here, which I've been in the district for six years, and that's the fact that we don't feel we've been able to cover history accurately enough. I like to say we've been teaching Watergate since Watergate, and that's forty-five years of history now that, we just haven't been able to cover while hitting the standards that we need to. So we came to Dr. Agwaji and Dr. McNulty to kind of brainstorm ideas, and we thought it'd be best to add a semester so we could hit the standards fully, we could add depth as well as breadth, and make sure we get to the modern era. So we add some relevance to the rigor, and that's where that US History C came in.
And I was happy to see that it also had a component for some Iowa history, which is...
Is actually required by the state now?
Right, right, and so why not, since we have to do it, let's do it right.
I just wanted to say how excited I am, I love, love, loved your reasoning for the geography. I, I think especially nowadays, I mean, something as simple as Africa is a continent, not a country. You know, you would imagine, a lot of people know that, but unless it's taught in the schools, why would someone look that up? So I, I just loved your wording as to why we have it. And sequentially, and I also like the, going from the micro to the macro in terms of world-US state history, that's very, very important. And I just love how it helps our students to think critically. Sequentially, World History A covers from what to what, and B?
Basically, from the beginning of time, is when it starts, so we don't spend too much on that. Primarily, we're starting with the Neolithic Revolution, at the beginning is kind of our first big thing. And then we're ending probably, World History A will end right around the era of the Renaissance and Reformation. And so we'll kind of pick up with Renaissance and Reformation, starting with World History B. And then we're getting to World War probably one during that timeframe.
Then what does C cover?
Uh, C would be World War One, it's, there's, basically, B is the early modern era, and then we have the current modern era from the world wars to now. And basically, what C gives us the opportunity is where we take the US history standpoint in US history. We feel that the global view is just as important. I do want to say that B would be required, according to our proposal, because it hits the majority of the standards. And then the choices are either A or C, so that the students have some choice in there, so they can take some control of their learning. And then we would incorporate the remaining standards equally into both of those courses.
And if I could just add on to World History C, we also thought that was important. As we look at our district and as we look at the world, it's a more diverse part of history as students will learn about decolonization and some of the struggles of Latin America, Africa, Asia, those types of things. And so I think that's pretty reflective of where a lot of our students are from. And so it's World History that maybe they can relate to more as well.
Quick question, so Western Civilization in terms of meshing with the higher ed, the common course numbering, how these fit with those? But also cultures, at some point, are we gonna add in the cultures course? So you'll have the, the Western Civilization and various cultures courses? Or would the cultures fall under social studies in this case? Like Latin American history culture?
Yeah, well, there's a, I'm not exactly sure on the question, we do have, there's a Western Civilizations course, that's a Hawkeye credit course that one of our teachers does teach. And we do cover a multitude of cultures in World History, so World History A, we're doing a lot of the ancient civilizations of the Americas, for example.
Yes, that's what I, what I was asking.
And covering some of the empires in Africa, Ghana, salt trade, those sorts of things, those are also being covered as well. So, yeah, there is diversity covered in World History A, that's something I know we want to improve upon as we work on the curriculum. That's been kind of a topic of our conversation, is making sure the equity piece is there, and that all parts of the world are represented, and that it's not just the history of Roman Greece, for example, that there are other things that happen in the world as well, that's important for students.
I was just asking, because I know with the, with the region colleges, you have to have at least one Western Civ course. And I just didn't know if a student had to take one of these courses as a prereq to that.
We are going to absolutely hit the Western Civ requirement, but we're just gonna take it a step farther and make sure it's a World History and not just a Western Civ.
Thank you both, and thank you both for your time and input, we really appreciate it.
Okay, I think it's my turn. I'm here to talk about the Waterloo Career Center. As you know, we are adding four new programs for next year, and a large portion of the additions to the program of study probably come from our four new programs. I think we are adding twenty-five new courses as part of that, and not all of them would be implemented next year. Basically, what happens is, when we meet with Hawkeye Community College to discuss our new programs, they give us a sequence of courses that are to be offered within those programs, and we implement them over a four semester period. But when we bring them forward, it is easier for us to help create a four semester sequence for our students and for our counselors to see how to lay that out in a career planning mode, to have all of the classes or courses approved, and then we're able to lay out the four semester sequence. So twenty-five new courses, four new programs. One other note here, too, the students basically are out there three of their eight periods a day. If you take into account, two periods are actual class time, and then one period is travel. So about thirty-eight percent of their time is actually spent at the Waterloo Career Center, if they, if they decide to take that option. We're looking at ways to incorporate core classes out there, and if you look through the program, you'll notice that we have applied, or we've added writing in the workplace in multiple areas, and we've also added some mathematics, applied math, and applied geometry into our Advanced Manufacturing and Sustained Trades courses. So when a student says, why do I take geometry, how am I ever gonna use this again? Well, actually, it'll show them that they actually will use this, applied geometry, and how it's used in their courses. And that is a core credit that they will earn there.
So the core credits are, how about the English in the World of Work, is that a core English?
Correct, that is core English course, that is, I said applied English, English in the World of Work is applied to, I think, five different programs that we're offering.
So one of the eight credits in English, or two of those it would count for.
Correct.
So are these other courses, which ones, can you tell from this, from pages eighteen to nineteen, which ones are core credit? Which ones can be core credit?
Mostly the math and literacy ones right now, we, there's, there are no science or social studies core courses at the Waterloo Career Center yet.
So what determines whether they qualify as core credit?
We do, yeah.
If it says English, it's gonna have an English credit, and if it has the mathematics to it, it would, it would apply towards the mathematics core credit.
Okay.
Okay, I have to look here, twenty-five new courses, I don't have them all memorized yet.
Where do you see that?
It's, it's item five, underneath L where it says Waterloo Career Center, it's on page thirty-two. It's number four, Added Principles of Sailing. I thought that was probably part of... I did, too, I thought maybe it was a marketing term that I was unaware of.
I am looking for it and not locating it.
It's in the booklet here?
It's actually in the board.
It's in our board book.
The board booklet.
Yeah, it's on, I think it probably is, too.
I'm guessing it's under Marketing Management, Principles of Selling?
Yes, I bet it's selling, not sailing. Although, you know.
My guess is that it's the Marketing Management Business Class.
Sailing might help you close the deal.
He had an aircraft design class, sailing.
Selling, okay, thanks, Sue, for finding that.
I was actually, I was like, hmm, I don't remember that one being approved, but, very exciting.
I thought it might be some new improved, yeah.
There could be a lot of math and physics in that one.
That's what I said.
So I read stars, I mean, there could be all kinds of things.
Are all these courses on page eighteen and nineteen of the, whatever booklet this is?
That's the course catalog.
Course guide, are they, will they be taught at the Career Center?
Correct. Well, correct, or the Elkhorn Early Childhood Center, so, part of the Waterloo Career Center program, correct.
So they're Hawkeye-approved, or Hawkeye-developed courses in some cases, but they'll be taught?
Correct, in most cases, they are concurrent credit with Hawkeye Community College, but in other cases, in some cases, for example, all the English in the math courses are our courses. And there are some additional courses that are in these sequences that are also Waterloo courses that are not articulated with Hawkeye Community College. But in most cases, they would be, their curriculum does come to us from Hawkeye Community College and are concurrent with them.
And they will be taught by Waterloo teachers, or in some cases, Hawkeye?
Correct. In some cases, we have run into issues, for example, like early childhood education, it's very difficult to find a teacher for that. And in some cases, there's other programs where we've had to go outside of our teachers that we have currently to hire to fill those positions.
And there is, the way the law reads, there is a significant...
And there is, the way the law reads, there is a significant, those rates are set by the state of Iowa. And it, there's a significant savings to offering concurrent credit with our staff member. And that is always our preference. However, you do need to know that in order for a community college credit to be given in addition to a Waterloo, there are certain standards that the teacher has to meet as well. So we always are, you know, the minute we're ready to offer a concurrent credit, we are always looking at what the requirements are for the instructor. And then we start looking on staff to see if somebody has that. If they don't, then we have to go to one of the other ways to fill it. But we work with Bev, we work with, I mean, Jeff knows, you know, those requirements. But we're all, it's actually a cheaper version for us to do, to have our staff teach it instead of having a Hawkeye teacher come here onsite for a certain amount of time.
So is there a special incentive for our staff to become qualified in these courses for it to count as Hawkeye credit?
We're looking for people who already are, right?
Correct. I mean, there's no incentive per se in regards to it. But obviously, teachers that get out to the Career Center, it's a great environment. They have students that are very engaged and want to be out there. So I mean, not that they're not at East or West, but the incentive is the opportunity to teach at the Career Center and.
It's not a salary incentive, is what you're saying?
Correct.
And Jeff, I was just wondering for the like audio production, video production. You know, they do those like the daily announcements at each of the high schools. Will that all be done from the Career Center now and like the middle schools that are doing Waterloo school news?
That's very interesting you ask that question because we had a meeting with the counselors today to discuss all of our new courses and scheduling and registration. And that question did come up because in the past, those courses have been taught at both East and West. And they were wondering, okay, so how are we going to do our daily announcements and such? So that's one of the things over the next few weeks, I'm setting up a meeting with our counselors and actually the teachers of these courses and discussing what we can do to make sure that that doesn't change. Because that has been a big part of the announcements for both schools.
Is there, some of these courses, is there special equipment or significant equipment needs that we're going to need to support some of these courses? I know it mentioned, for example, advanced manufacturing. I know that some of the equipments there, maybe all of it, but that sort of thing?
There will be expenses to multiple new courses here. The one thing that is helpful for us is we've been able, for example, advanced manufacturing, we've been able to supplement that, almost that entire classroom. All their new equipment has been purchased through the Carl D. Perkins funding, the federal money that we receive each year, which is approximately about $165,000. We also receive money from the regional planning partnership that we're part of, as part of the Central Rivers AEA. And so we also receive monies from that also that would, that go forward and have purchased equipment for that. We also have a large chunk of this year's Perkins money left and that we're kind of holding back on for purchases for the equipment for the new programs that are coming onboard for next school year. And we'll get that purchase. We have to spend that money by July 30th or June 30th. It's use it or lose it. So we will get our instructors hired, figure out what equipment needs we have. We do get a lot of input from Hawkeye on that. And we also get input from business industry and ask what the needs are and what best practice and what's current. And we've been getting a lot of input. Jane and I have been going on a lot of tours with sponsorship meetings with various businesses that are going to be coming on as partners. And they're going to also be on our advisory board for each of our new programs. And they give us a lot of input also on what equipment is needed. And as part of that, in many cases, many of our sponsors that are coming onboard or will come onboard have actually said, we will repurpose equipment that we currently use back to you guys as part of the agreement.
So at this point, there aren't any programs you would have put in but so capital intensive that we didn't have the funds for?
No, absolutely not. I feel very comfortable that with all of our five programs or four programs that are coming onboard, that we're going to be easily able to meet the needs of that through this year's Perkins money and next year's Perkins money. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Very comfortable with that.
This is a very, very nice layout, I think, of the programs and descriptions as well. So that should really help the counselors in selling this program.
Who can I ask about the English sequence? The English nine and 10 and then the lit and the written and the workplace? So my question, my question will be, I would, I know there's, you have to have four credits of English, correct? Four credits of English. Now, of those four credits, two have to be English nine and 10 or do the students, you know, because I think those are fundamental. So I guess I'm asking what the sequence is?
Right. So.
There are different options. There are advanced tracks and I think there are some that are.
So in terms of the language arts, so I know that grades six, seven and eight build up on English nine and 10. I guess my question is just to make, making sure that, you know, the literary genre, the literature genres and different things like that. But so that students, if they choose, because not all students, some high school students don't know if they want to go to college when they're sophomore, junior, even senior. But if they choose at the last minute to go to college, is there a way to make sure that they get at least those fundamentals to help them write a composition? Because we have so many English courses.
I'll start and then Dr. Kweli Anderson, I completely know where you're going. Because that the key element of creating a foundational base as a writer is critical for not only two-year schooling but four-year schooling and then goodness gracious, eight years of schooling. And, or working, you know, I mean, I think that the, that the demands also of employment today are exceedingly more different. And I think adding a difficulty level, especially with, to be honest, information technology. So to answer that is, it's two answers. One is that the sequence builds upon itself and our core requirements, I think, should have a great framework for preparing a good writer. Given that, I think, and what I want to say, I also want to congratulate our department chairs, not just in social studies, although they're wonderful, but across the board because we've kind of stepped up expectations around the ACT process and about also the writing piece to the ACT. And it's not that the ACT is any, any more particularly brilliant than another approach, but it is foundational and it's criteria based. So we have both high schools now working on developing a writing approach that will, I think, support our students well post-secondary or in the workforce. And, you know, I think that the Waterloo Career Center will also benefit from this foundation. One final piece, which you were alluding to, is what are we doing K-8? And we have put great efforts in bringing Lucy Cockens in, which is a curriculum-based approach that is rigorous. And it is taxing to our professional staff. And we are now in year two and a half. And I think we're starting to see some great gains on our students' abilities to write. And I will speak that I was in a first grade class at Lincoln on Wednesday. And what our students are doing, writing opinion statements, is a great place to begin as a first grader. So if Dr. Kweli Anderson wants to add more, feel free.
The only thing I'll add is we use rubrics, for example. He talked about Lucy Cockens materials that we have. We use rubrics. So that tells us or tells the student where they are. So it doesn't matter what grade level, we're looking at those rubrics and looking at where they are. And then we plan on how we'll support them to continue to grow as writers. And we're very excited about that. We're very intentional.
Because, the only reason I bring this up, because one of the trends and issues I noticed in higher ed, whether our students take on the ASVAP, COMPAS, whatever type of assessment, is they struggle, struggle with punctuation and grammar. You know, you go to some classes, citing references is something that's not focused on. And I think it's because students probably don't know that they would need to, to focus on those areas. But I just saw that that's something that our high school students struggle with once they take those assessments, assessment tests.
Yep.
And I'll just briefly speak as I had my Google on and nothing, no, everything's going to be voice activated, although it seems that, that some people activate it. You know, I think that convention counts. And there was a period of time in education where it was more of, and you know, creative writing obviously is key because it's about voice. But you do have to have structure. And I will say that both our K-8 curriculum and the movement in high school is adding convention as a key piece to the writing component. And I know that this has also affected our younger people. And I will have my comments on Twitter at some other time. But I will also say that we've had a big focus. And that's why Social Studies and Science is also doing the interdisciplinary approaches and are part of the rubrics too. It just isn't our English teacher's responsibility. And I am, I can't tell how excited I am, having taught freshmen at the university level and knowing exactly what you're talking about, to see us working at a K, pre-K 12 approach right now.
And one of the things that we, we work on is to help them realize that even though they have the phones and they can use those, but they have to understand why you do certain things. You don't just hit your phone and you text whatever you want to text. So we're helping them to be literate and to understand, you know, the theory behind, you know, everything that they're doing. Because they grab their phones, they don't, you know, they may not be able to explain to you why certain things work a certain way. But we want to make sure that we align their thinking and get them to a level where they understand things conceptually, not just procedurally. So we're very intentional about that.
Very good. Good work.
And I just, I don't have any other comments about the book except for just to thank the people who worked on it. It is, it is amazing to see the work that goes into this. And I think it's hard on any given year, given year. But both Comfort and Jeff are new this year and they were leading the charge through this and, and sometimes figuring it out as they went and asking a lot of questions. And I think the staff weighed in on many, many things. And so, and I know Dr. McNulty, you provided a lot of guidance here as well. So I really applaud your efforts. I think it's just gotten better every single year. And just that, that full approach of getting input from everybody and bringing a product that is really good. So I just wanted to publicly thank you for your work. Thank you.
Jane, I did have a question as far as the different diplomas. You know, that we offer the standard honors in the core. And then for 19, 20 and 21 and beyond, so like that national score standard, and that never changes?
The, say that, say that again. Oh, the two, yep, the national, yep, that is, that is a national norm that does not change on the 263. So what she's referring to is a graduation requirement that is a school board policy that is tied to the Iowa assessments. That is, that, that is a national, that's kind of like a cut score mark that they have to act, at least get a 263 or higher. As I understand it, as I understand it, Dr. McNulty can correct me here, this probably will be the last year for the Iowa assessments potentially. We've, although we have been saying that, I think, for four years now. So we'll see. But at the point when that does change, we will need to bring that board policy back because there will be no cut score yet. So at some point in time, we'll probably need to take a little bit of a reprieve or a little bit of a hiatus from, from having that requirement on. So I don't, do you have anything to add?
I will. So I intend to work 10 more years. So I promise you sometime before my retirement, this will need to change the policy. Given the latest information, it may not be anytime soon.
We just don't, we just don't know about that. But yes, it is still in play right now and it does stay the same from year to year because they've normed it that way.
Okay. And then as far as our credit hours for each one, that doesn't alter with all the other programs we offer? It still stays the same?
Yeah, it's just adding choice. I think you heard adding some choices and, and strategy, but not changing the underlying.
The basic, okay.
Yeah, credit requirements.
What's the minimum credit requirement by the state?
There, there is no actual credit, I don't think. I don't think, I think that's different from, you'll find it online, every district has something different. Instead, they have requirements of you, you must take four, I think it's 4333, right? And PE, so four is, you must take four years of English. You must take three years of math, three years of science, three years of social studies. You must take PE. And the rest of it is, is determined or laid out through chapter 12, Iowa code chapter 12. So there are certain things you have to, have to do. But as far, because every school does it a little bit differently. Some are on trimesters that they offer different credits that way. And so they don't have a hard and fast number, like you must have 44. Because some schools, 44 is equivalent to a different school's 66, so, or 50 or whatever, so.
But generally speaking, it all kind of shakes out similar. Because they all have, you know, the state requirements frame your.
It's very similar, yeah.
Your structure.
But if I recall correctly, I don't know how many years ago, we went from 40 to 44?
Right.
I think it was my first year.
But that was a local, that's a local decision. It isn't because the state changed it to 44. Some districts still have 40, some have.
Why is?
They still offer the core, which is 35 to 40.
Right, right.
So why is 44 the right number and not 43 or 45?
Well, I'm going to pass that off to quantum mechanics and probability. But the reality is there's just arbitrary decision or in local control, right? And what we value may be a little different than what, you know, Des Moines values or what Cedar Rapids may value. And I think that's really important. I think the notion of our school board and our administrators establishing a little bit outside of what the state says differentiates us from other communities.
We haven't thought about, or we think it's about the right number.
Well, it was, as I recall, and I've been here maybe just a little bit longer, but when that was changed, I believe that that had to do with the, the number of courses that we wanted students to finish with. And so what, what was happening is with a graduation requirement of 40, kids were achieving that earlier on in their, in their high school career. And some of them were choosing to graduate early. We wanted them to stay in school, especially when the, the credit requirements or when the, the law changed to offer concurrent credit. We wanted to entice kids to go ahead and get credits while they were still here in high school. So we upped it to 44. Is that better than 43? I, I don't know that that really would, would say. But I, I think that there was a, I kind of remember us mapping out how, how busy we wanted kids to stay all the way through their four years and, and still make it attainable, but yet encourage kids to stay in school and, and learn as much as they could during their four years. So I believe that was the, that was the request to change it to 44 so that kids would be enticed to stay.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I think I remember that history, that sometimes you forget the rationale.
Sometimes you forget the rationale, but remember the decision.
All right. Are we good with that then? Good? Okay. Then, all those in favor of approving the 2017, 2018 High School Planning Guide and Course Catalog, please signify by saying aye. And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Thank you, everyone, for your hard work on that and for staying. I appreciate it very much. The next item on our agenda is a resolution directing the sale of school infrastructure sales and service tax revenue bonds. This is a financing tool that we've used in the past to support capital projects. So I'm going to read the recommended motion and then I will turn it over to Michael Coughlin for a little bit of background. So the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the resolution directing the sale of $16,667,000 in school infrastructure sales, service and use tax revenue bonds, series 2018. Thank you, Sue, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Lyle. And then discussion, I will turn it over to Mr. Coughlin.
I think we have been down this road for a long time. As we were kind of discussing it the last few months of taking bids for the project and getting the next phase of the remodel all in place. And it's always interesting to know that different people have different perspectives. And I'm sitting here going, oh, it's interesting approving all these classes when you don't have the building paid for yet. So, so I should have been first, but then Tim, Tim could have headed back to Des Moines. But in the process that we have approved the bids in December for the Waterloo Career Center, we went on to the next phase of selling sales tax revenue bonds that we have done before. And again, to just make sure it's not misconstrued, that these are not funded by property tax, does not change our property tax. It is all based on the one penny revenue source that we have. And. And, um, after approving the bids, then we went out to seek, um, the sale of the bonds, the SAVE bonds. And at that time, we contracted again with the financial advisor, Piper Jaffrey, which Tim Loswald is here with us. And he can certainly answer any detailed questions on this. And I just invite him to come up and be ready if you've got something because, uh, I can, I can lead you so far into the water, and then he's gotta take over. Um, but we, we took bids on January eighteenth, and there were eight bidders. The range, and it was for about sixteen point five million dollars. And just to give you a review on that, it's based on the bid that we took of thirteen million, two hundred and twenty. And then the architects estimate soft costs of about twenty-five percent. So, that's the architect fees, it's furniture, it's equipment, it's contingencies. Um, those aren't all hard numbers, but it just gives us a project total to work with. So, that's how we went from thirteen-two of the bids to sixteen-five or sixteen-six for this because, uh, we would also have the sixteen-five plus some fees of doing this financing. So, um, that's how we end up with the sixteen, uh, six sixty-seven. And one other thing, as you talk about soft costs, is I have actually the architecture, the architect fee, furniture and equipment, but there's also contingency, and that's one thing that's very, a little trickier in a remodel. Because if any of you have ever remodeled your home, there's always surprises as different from new construction. So, uh, that's a part of it that we have to be aware of as we did our estimating. So, in that amount, uh, we had eight different bidders. And the, uh, range of interest rates that were offered was from two point nine-three percent to three point six zero. So, quite a wide range, uh, in offerings. And the lowest bid was from Regions Capital Advantage, um, at the two point nine-three percent. And I just wanted to let you know that I handed out this, um, the resolution has some explanation to it, and that's what I just stated, the two point nine-three in Regions. And then you also have, uh, a payment schedule. So, usually when you finance long-term with bonds, it's over twenty years. Um, but that is not possible since SAVE currently runs out in two thousand twenty-nine. So, we have to compress or compact our payments over a twelve-year period rather than twenty. So, actually, that cuts down on the interest cost, but, um, rather than spreading it out. But that's kind of the, the review of where we're at on this. It is, um, my recommendation, looking at it, and as we've talked about it within the district, and the finance committee has talked about this, they may have additional questions, but I'm coming from the standpoint of recommending the acceptance of this two point nine-three with Regions Bank, um, to fund the current project on the Waterloo Career Center. If you have any questions?
What's the, on page thirty-three of our booklet, it says twenty million.
Right, right.
We're at sixteen-six.
I gave you a new?
Yeah.
That was the capacity that we had? Was it up to twenty?
So, what is the reason for the change?
I'll let Tim answer that.
So, oftentimes when we start a project, since the, the words not to exceed preface the number, we'll oftentimes choose a number that's reasonable but high enough that if there's some turn of events, uh, for example, after talking to the architect, you decide the contingency is a little light, you want to add a little more to it, whatever those turn of events might be. In this particular case, I suggested twenty million because, uh, oftentimes in a revenue bond, there is a reserve fund, which is set aside, which should be ten percent of the issue. So, another million seven add to the sixteen-six, and you're up into the eighteen and a half million range pretty quickly. So, I just suggested, let's go with not to exceed twenty. It's a harmless phrase, and the borrowing amount, as you, as, as is noted there, is sixteen-sixty-seven, which is to fund the sixteen and a half million dollar project.
Okay. And, and who ultimately holds these bonds? Is it the institution that bids it, or does that get parceled out to other people? I mean, who, who, who are the ultimate holders?
Sure. Interesting question that, um, and so the short answer is when we do a placement like this with a bank, uh, we try to restrict how they can dispose of the bond. You've not entered into a, uh, uh, public securities offering. We've not done any of the legwork that would normally be done to offer a public securities. So, from my vantage point, I want to make sure that Regions, I don't mean anything negative, but that they don't take some step later that causes the issue to become a public security. And in, in our world, what we call, I don't want them selling the bonds to mom and pop. You know, if Regions wants to, Regions Capital Advantage is, excuse me, one of several of the subsidiaries of the parent, if they want to move it out of Regions Capital Advantage and stick it into, you know, Regions, I, uh, number two, I don't really care because they're sophisticated entities. But I don't want to see them selling it. I don't want to see local brokers selling it in-house because we've not done the steps necessary to allow that to happen. So, the, the resolution you'll take up at the next meeting, there will be a issuance resolution. And in that resolution, there will be restrictions as to what Regions can and can't do.
So, I guess my underlying question is, these will end up in an institution that would normally have paid the thirty-five percent corporate tax and now will pay the twenty-one percent? As opposed to people that would be subject to personal rates?
Correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, that's, so the lower tax rate diminishes the extraordinary value of a tax-free bond?
And the, and causes, over time, should cause that interest rate to be higher.
Yep.
Okay.
The sheet that you gave us, Michael? On number eight, it shows the NPV of debt, two point nine oh seven. So, how are you deriving? Yeah, last column on the right.
So, um, when you, so the, the present value of the debt payment, when you ignore the reserve fund, if you were to sell a public securities offering in today's market, be about two point nine oh seven. So, the question then becomes, talk to, talk about that reserve fund. So, a million six gets set aside, or a million seven, something like that, is borrowed. You're paying two point something interest rate on it, two point eight, two point nine percent. You, it's set aside, it's invested, it must be available every six months if there's a shortfall. So, it can't be invested for the life of the bond. You know, best, best case is you can invest it for a six-month period of time. If you want to go longer than that, you're gonna take some market risk. So, six-month investment instrument would produce a, a rate in the, in the low ones right now. So, think, stand back from all of the math. You're gonna borrow at two and three-quarters, let's say, and you're gonna invest that money at one percent. Doesn't strike me as the greatest business deal in the world, right? So, what we try to do is quantify, what's the, we call the drag, what's that drag on the return? And in this case, that drag is the equivalent of about sixteen one-hundredths of a percent. So, you go from the two ninety, uh, to a three sixteen, I'm sorry, twenty-six one-hundredths of a percent. So, you go from two ninety to about three sixteen is what that drag ends up causing in terms of cost to the district. Now, I want to stop there because we'll look back in fifteen years and know how the money might have been invested and what kind of rate of return. Right now, all we can do is do, use reasonable estimates based on where, where the market is and how the district manages its money.
So, aside from the reserve, is this, your decision is where to invest the unspent, is it the district's decision on where to invest the unspent money during the?
When we're issued the bond and the money comes to us, then we're able to invest that as we choose.
That's a whole separate, separate process, though?
And I can say Regions is eager to talk about that, as you might expect.
Because we're, I mean, we're going to, um, receive the, the balance of the bond, but we won't, it's going to take almost two years to pay it all out.
Right.
And we talked about that initially with, in finance of saying, should we borrow less now and more later? But it was the same issue of rates are probably gonna go up. So, um, the decision was made to just do it all, all upfront, like this.
So, when would we, under the current plan, when would we receive the money?
Um, March one, I think.
Thirty.
March one, okay. And then, it has to be a short-term investment?
We, it, we'll have to make some decisions on that because we do have some cash flow in SAVE, but how much do we want to leave liquid? We're gonna have to keep that in mind all the time.
But is it like a, but is it a fixed period typically, uh, six months or a year that you would say, okay, I got ten million for the next year before the big, big construction numbers come in? Is that typically how it goes?
I have seen people do that. The more common approach that I see is that, um, people take the draw schedule from the contractor, which Michael's got a pretty good handle on, and say, all right, I'm gonna buy a one-month CD for four hundred thousand and a two-month CD for six hundred. And then they just, what, what I would call a ladder. Each one has its own maturity. That way, you don't have ten million coming due a year from now when you don't need it. But you've tried to stagger it. In this case, that'll end up, because of the way that interest rates are going up the first couple of years, that'll actually end up pushing the rate up probably into the high ones and maybe a low two percent.
So, can it be a flex rate on the balance?
It could be. I haven't seen a flex rate in a number of years, but it could be. Yeah, very much so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything further? Thank you, Michael, for, once again, taking what is sometimes a complicated issue and making it, taking it to people like me who are not finance majors.
It's easy to do when Tim's here to back me up.
Yes, and thank you, Tim. I appreciate your knowledge as well. Thank you. Didn't mean to slight you on that. So, um, this requires a roll call vote for us this evening, so I'm gonna start to my left with Sue Flynn.
Yes.
Yes. Rhonda McCrayna? Aster Williams? Lyle Schmidt?
Yes.
And Shanley McNally, yes. So, the motion carried. That is the resolution directing the sale of school infrastructure sales and service tax revenue bonds. Well, that concludes the action items on our agenda tonight, so I'm gonna turn it over to our superintendent, Dr. Lindeman.
Yep, thank you. Um, I'll move quickly. Uh, first of all, with the, the weather, the way it is, I just thought it would be prudent, I guess, to make a couple of comments about the weather and, um, the not-so-fun task of making decisions that impact eleven thousand children and seven thousand different families. And so, I, I just want to publicly thank the people who weigh in to help that decision be made. But most of all, I wanted to thank our, um, our families for, for working with us on it. I know that sometimes, I mean, you just can't make decisions that please everyone, but I have felt a, a certain amount of patience and maybe a, a certain amount of grace this year in, um, from, from people I have received. Every year, it seems like I get a phone call from somebody who wants to share, you know, another perspective, and, and that's absolutely fine, absolutely fine, and I, I appreciate that. But, um, I know that just recently, we had a, a situation where we ended up in, through a, a sequence of events that makes sense to me but may not make sense to somebody else who didn't get, um, wasn't, weren't part of that. Um, we ended up making a fairly late call on, um, the, the, with the ice coming in. And, and we had received some, you know, we were tracking it all night and honestly believed that we had made a really good decision. And then the weather, um, decided to change very quickly. So, um, I, I felt, I mean, as I was out and about in the community, I just felt really, um, supported. And, and, um, people said, you know, we know sometimes it just can't be helped. And so, I, I just wanted to, you know, to, I guess, mention it, that it's a difficult decision, but I do really appreciate people just making the best of, of what happens in Iowa winners. So, um, second thing, it is a new semester. Um, we started a new semester just a few days ago, and so I just, you know, always urge everyone, it's a, it's a clean slate. This sounds a little bit like it should be coming from Sue because you're always really good about, uh, making those, those comments about effort, and, and now's the time to really buckle down. So, um, I'll say it in front of you in case, so you can cross that off your list, maybe if it was on there. We are in the, in the middle of eighth grade registration, parent meetings, and we had a series of six of them. We have finished three of them. We would have finished four of them except for one of them was canceled. Um, so we've got three left, and I just want to reference when they are. Um, one is tomorrow night at Central, and, and if you are a parent of an eighth grader, you can come to any of them. They are all the same. Um, January twenty-third is tomorrow night. That's at Central at six-thirty. We also have one here, um, Thursday at noon, right in this, in this room. Um, we offered an eight, eight o'clock option. We offered a noon option because sometimes that works best for parents. Um, that, that, the eight o'clock one was not heavily attended, but it was attended. So, we were happy that we, we were able to accommodate some schedules. And then the final one is Monday night, January twenty-ninth, and that was, is the rescheduled one, and that is Bunker. So, parents, again, if you haven't been to one, we really urge you to come to one of those. Um, I think it just provides really great, great insight on how to register your children. And again, we ask for feedback at the end of each of those, and the feedback has been very good. Um, I think actually the meetings get a little bit better as we go, and maybe that's me, I get better in the presenting piece of it. So, if you haven't been to one, I, I think, um, actually, that, that's great because you'll get even the ver, the very best ones, the, the last three, we'll say. So, um, two more things quickly. Conferences are coming up on February thirteenth and fifteenth, and I know that's a hard concept to think about when the calendar still says January, but that time goes very, very quickly. We do have people who are perhaps gonna be gone that week, and so we start scheduling conferences and working with parents even up to three weeks ahead of time, which is actually right now. So, if you are, um, you know, start thinking about conferences and when that can come, but get that, those dates ingrained in your mind, February thirteenth and fifteenth. And then the final thing is, just a kind of an interesting thing, we have been doing, I, I've told some of the board members this, but, um, just bears repeating. We have been going, uh, around to Realtors in the Cedar Valley, meeting with groups of Realtors, just kind of, we call it our selling Waterloo tour. And really, the concept behind it is just, uh, to help Realtors help us when they are meeting with prospective families, prospective business owners who might be moving to the Cedar Valley. We, we want them to be well-informed about what options we have. We feel strongly that we can offer things that other districts may not be able to. You saw that tonight in the course catalog, when you looked at the number of courses that we offer. I, I guarantee if you went to other districts, you would not see that wealth of opportunities. So, um, we've been, we, it's been extremely well-received. We've been to a variety of, of Realtors already, and we actually have more on the schedule. Pam sets those up for us, and we just kind of take them materials, we share a little bit. We, we actually have been sharing a lot about the Career Center because we want to make sure that they are very aware of the fact that that is a unique opportunity. So, um, we've appreciated being, uh, invited in, and we've, we've appreciated the opportunity to share all of the amazing things going on. So, with that, I will conclude.
That's awesome. Thank you. Um, I'm gonna start with Lyle this evening for board comments.
Just like to commend everyone on the course catalog, despite a unusual amount of new content this year. Uh, it's well-done and easy to understand, so, and good job all the way around.
Thanks, Lyle. Aster?
Uh, nothing this evening.
Rhonda?
I just want to share with parents on the upcoming, uh, teacher conferences to, uh, there's a list of, um, ten questions you should, you should ask as a parent during parent-teacher conferences, just to help give you some type of template. Uh, a few examples of that is, how do you best prefer to communicate with me? So, this, you know, sometimes we hear parents complain about, you know, I didn't get the note from my, from my son or daughter. But so, this would be a great, great way to find out, what is the best way to communicate with your, with your child's teacher? Uh, what do you see as my child's strengths? What do you think are the academic challenges they have? Um, how is my child doing socially? What can I do at home to support what you're doing in the classroom? Those are just a few questions to ask. But again, just to help get, um, prepare for parent-teacher conferences, just look up what are some of the, the best top ten questions to ask at a conference.
Awesome advice. All right, Sue, now that we took all your things.
Yeah, you took everything, no. I just, along with the catalog- Yeah, you took everything. No, I just, along with the catalog, you know, I just, again, want to thank our community partners that are, um, coming alongside this and making this just an awesome place to offer so many courses and classes and, and just a top-notch facility. And without their help, we wouldn't be able to do that. And then I just was thinking, I saw this weekend, the, uh, Bunker team of kids, um, won. And the ROTC here winning and the Lego Leagues. And I just think we have so much to offer our students, and I just, um, this is a great district.
Here, here, Sue. I would, I would also like to add that I was able to go up to Hampton on Saturday. Um, West High took twenty, uh, groups up there for large ensemble for, um, uh, state speech and theater. And seventeen of the twenty are making it to state out of districts. So, um, there is a lot of diversity and a lot of awesome activities that our kids get to do in this district. And I know we've got great athletics, but we do a lot of other extracurriculars, like you just mentioned, that are fantastic for our kiddos. So, um, the next meeting, actually, I just want to let everyone know that we will not be meeting the second, um, Tuesday. We will be meeting the first Tuesday in February, and that's been well-published, but, oh, I mean, Monday. What did I say, Tuesday? I'm sorry. I meant to say Monday. We're meeting February fifth instead of, um, I was looking at the thirteenth, which is a Tuesday, sorry. Um, we are meeting on February fifth, and so that will be when our next meeting is. And if there's nothing further from the board, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. And a second? Thank you, Rhonda. And all those in favor? Aye, we are adjourned. Good evening. Thank you.
You have? All right.